Good evening, we are now ready for our special meeting. Um, the executive session personnel city manager contract extension, the city of Darlington may or may not vote after close of executive session. You want to get a motion?
I'll motion that we go into executive session for personnel city manager contract extension, the city of Darlington may or may not vote after close of the executive session.
Second. All in favor, the board has a sign. Uh-huh. Please have a say in writing. Okay, we would ask y'all to leave out until we call you back, okay?
Extension of the city manager's contract, I made the motion that that contract be extended until July 1, 2020.
I'll second that motion.
Any more discussion? All in favor, the board have no sign of "aye"?
Aye.
Please have a say in writing.
Nay.
Nay. Raise your hand the one that said "aye". Raise your hand the one that said "nay". Motion carries. Okay?
Now, your honor, the gentle comments, I would propose that council, either during the, um, month of July or that month is too busy, in August, that we have a work session where we go through our city ordinance, we further define duties and responsibilities of the, um, city manager, um, as they may be found in the, um, current document. And that we also discuss among ourselves, like, a good way where when there is an issue that needs to be addressed, that, um, everybody's on board and everybody understands, just some of that housekeeping type stuff, and go ahead and get that done, so each one of us knows what's happening, and as we communicate with Mr. Garland, um, he knows that we're communicating with him as a unified council. So I'd like to have that set up as a work session in either late July or fairly early August.
Making a motion to go out of the executive session?
I'll motion that we adjourn.
Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Please have a say in writing, okay, we have the executive session, and we're ready for a meeting. We have a question about a congressman, John Miller.
Thank you. Let us bow our heads. Father God, we thank you for the opportunity that you've given to each one of us to serve as your leaders in this city. May we be sensitive to the needs of all members of our community. May you give us wisdom and knowledge, may what we do be pleasing in your sight as we move this city forward. Father, it takes all of our efforts working together, it takes the efforts of our citizens bringing good ideas to us. So Father, just bless us all as we go forward, on behalf of this city, in Christ's name.
Let... Let the people of America, the United States of America, and the people who voted for which stands, one nation, one God, in the middle, with liberty, justice for all. Um, approval of the minutes of the May 15th, June 5th, 2018 council meeting, we have to do one at a time. Huh? Thirty-first, uh-huh. Fifth and the twenty-eighth.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of May 15th, 2018 council meeting.
Second.
Okay, so by moving second, if we receive the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
Please have a say in writing, 9th and the 31st?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of May 31st, 2018 council meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, the board have no sign of "aye"?
Aye.
Please have a say in writing. Okay, motion for June 5th?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 5th, 2018 council meeting.
Second.
Moving second, if we receive the minutes of June 5th, we the all in favor? If we sign of "aye"?
Aye.
Please have a say in writing, um, June 28th?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of June 28th council meeting.
Second.
It's a proper motion of second, all in favor? Sign of "aye"?
Aye.
Please have a say in writing, okay, thank you. Um, approval of the meeting agenda?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second. Probably moving second, that we received the, um, meeting agenda, all in favor? If we have no sign of "aye"? Please have a say in writing. Okay, in fact, we call the standing committee, Darlington Downtown and Valdez Association, we keep it up.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, Council. This Thursday, the D D R A continues its Bringing Downtown Live Free Concert Series at Liberty Lane and Pearl Street. Dustin James and Hank Edwards of Darlington will perform with the Darlington Lions Club staffing the event. Special thanks to Fast Track Convenience Stores, Pepsi of Florence, Wilson Senior Care, the Darlington Rescue Squad, Belt Funeral Home, Kissler Funeral Home, and Andrews and Bryant Incorporated. Papa John's Pizza will be on site selling pizza by the slice alongside Mike's County Ice, and C and C Ribs and Barbecue will have some ribs and barbecue, and last time he had states too, which were delicious. Medic of South Carolina and the D D R A will present a community karaoke party with S and T Entertainment on Thursday, August 9th, at Liberty Lane and Pearl Street as part of this series. And Radio Vibe will round out the, the concert series on Friday, August 31st, and that's during race week. And you've got a schedule of race week events, um, in your packet. Anybody who's interested in helping with these concerts or events should contact my office, we are still accepting sponsors and vendors. Another thing that I just found out just yesterday, we will be having a cruise in, Darlington Cruisers will be there on Thursday night as well. They were there at our first event and they have decided to come back, so. Get to see some nice old cars. Um, the D D R A also invites businesses to network and learn about the D D R A programs and give us feedback for future product, projects at our monthly members breakfast at 8:00 a.m., Wednesday, July 25th, at Taki's Diner. Breakfast will be provided for member businesses at no charge, or a donation of $5 towards the meal for non-members. These meetings will continue monthly on the last Wednesday of the month at 8:00 a.m. through October. Bring a business card for a chance to win tickets to the Southern 500 race in September as well. Also, the D D R A still has funds for its improvement incentive program. This is a 50/50 matching grant of up to $1,000 that can go towards facade improvements such as a fresh coat of paint, or repairs to your front entrance, or adding a new awning or signage to your business. The grant application is available on the city website, at build@darlington.org, or from my office. And our most recent recipient, Single Terry Auto Repair on South Main Street, he not only painted the front of his building, he painted his antique telephone booth, he also updated the signage. And then when we went to get the photo to present the grant to him, he donated that $1,000 to his church.
Oh.
To pay it forward even further. So, we certainly wanted to recognize him. Do you have any other questions?
Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
My name is Harriet Hollis, not here to master the report, anybody came for her, I'm thirty-fifth? Okay, thank you. Um, those citizens, unfinished business, um, public hearing annexation of 224 Blue Street. We are now open for a public hearing, is there anybody here, about 224 Blue Street?
Okay, um, I, um... I had a well wart, so I had to, um, my well went dry, so I applied for state water. And so I received it. This is why I'm here today.
What's your name, sir?
Ernie Evans.
Are you the, are you the one of 220, 20, um...
224 Blue Street.
Okay. Okay. You have a problem, I mean, we approved it, I mean, you know, you got the water did.
Yeah.
Okay, so, is there a problem with it?
No, no, there's no problem.
No, no, okay, uh-huh.
So everything is fine.
Okay.
I have no problem with it.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else? We close, we close the hearing. Um, the second reading on the ordinance 2018-13 annexation of 224 Blue Street, can I get a motion? On the second reading?
I move that we have second reading, approve the annexation of 224 Blue Street, which is ordinance 218, I'm sorry, 2018-13.
I'll second. Okay, the proper move is second, motion is second, that, um, we do the second reading on the ordinance 2018-13 annexation on 224 Blue Street, all in favor, if we have no sign of "aye"? Please have a say in writing, motion carries. Okay, now we got to have a public area zoning of the 224 Blue Street. Anybody to contest that, say anything about that?
May I, we have Lisa explain to the record what R six means?
Okay. Lisa?
All right. The planning commission reviewed all of the zoning designations in that area, the choices for them, because you do have, you can't single out one property and zone something different than what's around it. There's general commercial in that area, there's R ten, which is our low-density residential, the most strict rules on residential, and then R six, which is what they chose based on what is actually on the property at this time. Currently, there is a brick den double wide there, and it is kind of behind Springfield Apartments, in that case. And adjoining property owners, if they were to have a similar issue with their wells, would probably be, you know, ended up zoning the same as this area, that's that.
And there's no problem with that, that's fine?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else got a thing? Somebody show the hearing? Okay? So, hearing the zoning, I'm just going to pick that out. Okay, let's go to the second reading on the ordinance 2018-15 zoning of 224 Blue Street, the R six, can I, can I get a motion for that?
I'll motion that we approve the second reading of the ordinance 2018-14 for zoning of 224 Blue Street, R six.
Second. Okay, the proper motion is second, if we receive the second reading on the ordinance 2018-14 zoning 224 Blue Street, R six, all in favor? If we have no sign of "aye"?
Aye.
Please have a say in writing, motion carries. New business, Patricia Sullivan, Darlington County First Step.
Hello, council members, I have, uh, a guest with me, Tiffany Bird, she's, um, speaking with me as well, but thank you all for having us, um, and allowing us to talk a little bit about what we're doing in Darlington County. So, again, I'm Patricia Sullivan, I work with Darlington County First Steps as the communication specialist, and I'm also the coordinator for the Choose Well grant that we receive, um, through North New Morning Foundation. Tiffany, she'll talk a little bit more about the Choose Well initiative and what we're doing there. So I'll tell you what our mission is, First Steps is to provide program services and information to strengthen the families and communities in Darlington County, and our vision is strong families and healthy communities, so everything that we do, our program services and information is to see that vision come to fruition. We have a variety of programs, I kind of categorize them because we have a lot of services, but we focus on family strengthening, we have a home visiting program, school transitioning, which is getting children ready for school, we do reproductive health education for our clients, um, youth, we have a youth leadership team, so we work with adolescent youth, contraceptive care, educational counseling, which is birth control counseling for our parents who are interested in that option. And so today I want to talk with you a little bit more about the contraceptive care side of things, which is the birth control, and I'll let Tiffany tell you a little bit more about Choose Well. Thank you.
So as Patricia said, I'm Tiffany Bird, and I'm the manager for community reaching organizations for an initiative called Choose Well. Now Choose Well is a four-year initiative that's really focused on decreasing the rates of unintended pregnancies in South Carolina. It's funded by a South Carolina-based nonprofit called New Morning Foundation, and they've been around doing reproductive style healthcare work for about a decade or so. Now, as I mentioned, our mission is to reduce unintended pregnancy in South Carolina, but our vision is to see a South Carolina where there's equitable access to all methods of birth control, without a person receiving any coercion, or judgment, or stigma. Now what that means is that we want to see a South Carolina where women, men, and their families are not forced to use any particular method of birth control, but who have access to whatever method they desire and are not judged for their choice. So you're probably wondering why this issue isn't really a problem, is it important? Well, in South Carolina, over half of all pregnancies are unintended. Fifty-four percent of women reported themselves to that their last pregnancy, that their last pregnancy was an unintended pregnancy, which means that it was either mistimed, so I'm happy, but wasn't at my right time, I wasn't really prepared, it was unplanned, or it was unwanted. And what that means is a woman didn't want to be pregnant then, and maybe not ever. There's also some significant financial costs in the state for unintended pregnancy. South Carolina pays for about 79% of all unintended births, which totals about $84 million a year. Now, I don't want to focus so much on cost, but I really want to divert your attention to the health implications that are associated with unintended pregnancy. Now babies born from unintended pregnancies are more likely to be of low birth weight, they're more likely to have longer hospital stays, and are more likely to be sent home with equipment to help them with growth and development. These babies are also less likely to be breastfed, and we all know that breast milk is the healthiest for growth and development. And it also has some protective factors, because the baby can receive antibodies from the mom through the breast milk. Now moms who experience unintended pregnancy are less likely to have had prenatal care, which could mean that she's not in her healthiest state for pregnancy. This has been associated with increased risk for complications during and after labor. Ultimately, what I want you all to remember about Choose Well is that we're an initiative that's really focused on working with partners like Darlington County First Steps and other healthcare providers across the state, to ensure that the community can be educated on birth control options that are available to them, and to ensure that they can be connected with a provider where they can get those methods without cost being a barrier. We're all about providing access to birth control if a person so desires, without cost being a problem for them. We realize that birth control is different for everyone. What we've seen is that women who are educated about and are understanding how to access their options, they make more healthy decisions about their reproductive health, and this results in healthier moms and healthier babies. Thank you.
I would like to pass out some packets with some more data in regards to the reproductive health.
Do you, um, I know they're in the beauty shop, I come to the beauty shops already, so is there any other special place that you want to put them?
Yes, so we were interested in the Darlington Recreation Department as an extension of the program that you're talking about, and for those of you who don't know, we call it ACDC, which stands for Access Condoms in Darlington County, and so we partnered with different barber shops, beauty salons, small businesses, and individuals in the community to disseminate condoms for free of charge, and we put them in those locations because those are more nonjudgmental, uh, locations for clients, and, um, so we offer them, it's kind of like a unlimited supply, we give it to them anytime they need it, and it's a good process, we always, uh, we always have a need for condoms, people call us all the time, we need more, we need more, so obviously there is a need, and since we're talking about condoms and things like that, if you would take a look inside your packet...
This is just for information, are you asking the meeting to put these throughout the city?
Yes.
Is that your presentation, uh, okay?
Yes, so, um, in your packet, there's an infographic for Darlington, and you can see, again, that it is a need for this, uh, so if you look down, I highlighted under community well-being, the county ranking, we're tenth highest in the state for women in need of publicly funded family planning services. County ranking is eighth highest for teens not enrolled in school and not working. County rank is 11th highest for people living in poverty. You look at the sexual health, county ranking is 19th highest for ages 15 to 19 for gonorrhea. County rank is eighth highest for chlamydia ages 15 and 19. So clearly, you see in Darlington that our youth needs some protection, and so why not give it to them in discreet locations, free of charge, no judgment? And so I'm coming to, uh, to ask if we could, uh, start a healthy precedent in Darlington, which is very different. I know when people hear the word condoms, it is kind of alarming, but we can't just sweep it under the rug like it's not a necessity for our communities. So I mean, with the stats and with the information that we heard from Tiffany, I feel like it would be a great opportunity to have it at the Darlington Recreation Department and to work with them, and to devise a plan that is comfortable for everyone, but very beneficial for the people who actually need the service. So I just would like to know if you all would grant us permission to work with them, um, and create a strategic plan to, uh, put condoms in that facility in discreet locations?
Are you the same organization that puts them in the, um, salons and barber shops?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Yes.
I, my only concern with the, with the recreation department is the ages, because we have them from, you know, four, five, going on. And it would, you're working with them, be able to limit, what, the exposure to that...
Yes, so...
To that age group?
So, my, my thought process is, we understand that there are children that, you know, who maybe shouldn't have it in their face at the moment, but, um, I would just like to work with them, because that, he works there every day, just about, and he knows the, the environment, the atmosphere, and how the ins and outs of the place, so I would like to work with him and see, like, what does he think is the best solution, or the best way to go about putting a condom in his facility.
You...
Go ahead, John.
Are you, uh, going to be educating these kids or teenagers or young adults, as far as you're not promoting the sex?
No.
You're going to try to educate them possibly abstinence, rather than promoting...
That's always the first, that's always the first line of communication, we promote abstinence first, but I mean, things do happen, and in case they do, we want to make sure they're prepared, and so we want to have an available free resource for them, just in case they do end up in a situation like that. No, we're not at all.
Mr. Business, would you be staffing, or would you be relying upon city employees to be involved in dispersing of this...
Um, it's just really, it would depend on him, how he would want that facilitated, but we don't usually...
What I would like for you to do, if you make a talk, and after y'all have some proposition, come back to us as, as councilmen, say, this is how we think you can achieve under these circumstances, and let us give you some approval on it, rather than, at this point in time, I think, um, some of us may not be as familiar with that part of the program as, as others may be, and I don't want to put too much burden on our city employees and them being, um, responsible for too much, so I'd just, I'd like to hear what the idea is.
It's not really a heavy responsibility, um, for instance, like with our current ACDC partners, we just put the condoms, we just give them condoms, and the people know where to get them, because we've established that rapport and that relationship with them, so it's usually not a heavy burden on the client, on the employers.
So the only thing...
With them going into the office to get them, having them in the office away from the smaller children, and that the, the older kids, the older adults, whatever, might need to go into the office and get them, they wouldn't be out.
Right, that was my first thought, that was my first thought.
Are you comfortable?
Not at our Samuel Street location, maybe at the Gary, um, where we have the older kids at, that might be, not with the little kids at, because we only have two of them and under, and A W's down, we have from 15 to maybe 21, maybe that location might be a better than Samuel Street.
In the oldest, right, in the oldest spot, okay. Well, I can tell you from my experience and working in the Darlington County School District, um, there are kids, and you got here 15 through 19, and we're trying not to, um, expose these to our younger kids, but I can tell you, there's kids out there as early as 10 and 12, as engaged in sixth now. So these kids know what's going on.
Yes.
So, um, what I've seen in the salons and in the barber shops, is that you, you just put them in there, and they're made available if they want them, there's no need for staffing or anything like that, but these kids, even at eight, nine years old, know a whole lot more than we knew when we were, I bought them for myself. So, um, I, I think it'd be benefiting both locations.
Thank you.
From what I've seen to have to deal with in the public school system, I know.
I've got no problem with that at all either. I, um, might would say we don't put them in the office, um, maybe we can find a more discreet area that is educated that they're in this place.
Right. Yes, so we have a system, we have logos, we have a window decal, so we can put it on the door, we have stickers, so they can know, okay, this logo means I can get condoms here, so we don't...
They need to know where to put them.
So it's just condoms, it's not pamphlets, or...
We have pamphlets.
Yes, and everything.
Mm-hmm. We have pamphlets.
But there's not going to be an employee there educating anybody, it's just pamphlets and condoms?
Yes. This is just available free resource.
I just want to make the comments, I retired from the Department of Health and Human Services purposes 2010, I am just simply surprised that Darlington is just now getting, getting to this, because we were all over the state, had been right, so that was the entire time I was there. And, um, so yes, I'm all in favor at many locations, because I do know those were the programs, and it always was about abstinence, and of course, the figures already showed that everybody's not abstaining.
Just for information purposes, so that you can educate the community, where are the locations where First Step taught the rights of tradition?
So we have, uh, a website, that's really what I can direct you to, darlingtoncountyfirststeps.org, and it lists all of our programs, our services underneath, so that would be my suggestion is to browse that website when we get them on here.
Who's this nice lady you brought with us?
This is the mastermind behind everything, Donna Bragg, and she, of course, is our executive.
Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you. Of Lamar, she wears many hats.
She and I have worked together for many years.
Mr. Matt Fissell, would you like to say the thing?
Well, I, I want to give a shout out to Lisa Chalen Rock, because when we started on this journey of pregnancy prevention, Rainy Knight was the school superintendent, and Lisa was the editor of the Hartzell Messenger, and I call it a Pulitzer Prize-winning article that she wrote, that was on the front page of that paper, that just succinctly indicated to people that we need to do something. At that time, I think the figure was like $13 million a year, that it was costing us $13 million a year in Darlington County from unintended pregnancies. We've come a long way, so we get funding now from the New Morning Foundation, through the Choose Well, but the Duke Endowment has also funded our, our pregnancy prevention initiative. Mr. Harris E. Loach Jr., I like to say, Mr. Harris E. Loach, formerly CEO of Sanoco Products Company, serves on the Duke Endowment Board, and the Duke Endowment commissioned a study called Accelerating Progress. In Darlington County, you have that information in there, was the only county where our teen pregnancy rate was also, was a high burden in terms of the economic impact, but it was also high volume. And when Mr. Deloach saw that in his board meeting with the Duke Endowment, he said, we have to do something. And so they've been supporting us now for, this is going on our third year, yeah? So we just want to make sure that we, that the young people have access and information, and that we have a healthy community, that's our goal. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Everybody's all right with that?
Thank you so much, thank you.
Take you. You want us to make a motion? You got to go into a motion, make a motion that we accept the Darlington County First Step, um, that they come in and bring in the condoms to both schools. I mean, both, uh, recreation departments and would talk with them personally, make sure and stuff, and put in a place for the students and get it might need it.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Sir.
Sir, sir. All in favor of the vote, motion that we're signing?
You make the original motion?
I made it. I did it, and now I make.
You make?
Okay. Man, I can't do this, okay?
Put it on paper.
Oh goodness.
All in favor? All in favor of the motion that we're signing? Okay, ladies have a saying, right? The motion carries. Okay, Mr. Anthony Green, Fatherhood Group.
Good afternoon, council, mayor. I know it says Anthony Green on the agenda, but it also mentions Fatherhood Group, so.
Yes.
We, we, we work diligently as an, as an outstanding team, so the team is with us.
Okay.
Um, and if it's alright, I'd like to pass on a few pamphlets to kind of talk a little bit about our program and extinguish them. Sorry, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for having us today. We wanted to come to you and introduce ourselves and our program in this wonderful Darlington County area. Um, my name is Anthony Green, I'm an intervention specialist with a program called the Man-to-Man Fatherhood Program. Uh, with me as part of the team, uh, this is Mr. Tanner Turner, also intervention specialist. Uh, this is Mr. Daniel Blathers, also intervention specialist. And the thing about Mr. Blathers, he is from Darlington. And of course, this wonderful gentleman here, this is Mr. Craig Lightfoot, he is our economic developer with the Man-to-Man Program. Uh, and, and also, as I said again, we work as a team, so, uh, gentlemen, meantime, feel free to want to join in, give the information. And of course, uh, mayor and, and some of the council, you may be familiar with some of the initiatives that we've done throughout the council. Any questions you may have, please come in, feel free to answer. But, um, the Man-to-Man Fatherhood Program, it is a eighteen-month program that is geared towards strengthening and, and bridging the gap between fathers and families and making them stronger again. Fathers that may be eighteen years of age, that have children that are at least, uh, the age of, under the age of eighteen. And also in the program as well, not only the fathers, but we also have mothers in the program as well that may be at least the age of eighteen and have children under the age of eighteen. What we do with these individuals, we work with them diligently to try to strengthen them, to see what is the factors, to bring them back into the workforce, to make sure that they're providers once again for their families. We're talking about situations where there may be, uh, individuals that may or may not be with their children. There may be a child support issue. Many of, uh, our participants that are referred to us and those that we recruit, sometimes they may have child support issues. And where we come in with that, we work diligently with the Department of Social Services, where we have a contract with, where the actual point of incarceration. If the individual is facing incarceration due to child support, because of our, our partnership and our relationship with them and with the courts, the courts will allow the individuals to come to our program. That starts the eighteen-month period. And during that period, we actually take the indivi- the individuals through a five-point component where we help try to strengthen the individual's parenting skills, their co-parenting skills, also to help broaden and strengthen their healthy relationships. Uh, the job readiness, the employment factor. Many a times, we've had individuals that have been, uh, referred to our program or we recruited where they're labeled as deadbeat dads. But working with them throughout the several months that we have, we've come to understand, these individuals aren't deadbeat dads, they're just dead broke. So what we try to do is to get that individual to understand, there's a responsibility factor to get back into the workforce. There's a responsibility factor to become a, a provider again. And also, the greatest of all, to have the individ- individual understand, it's time to be a father. Um, also there's the actual economic stability factor that we present. The child support indivisitation, which many of our individuals do not understand, the child support system. It causes arrows to the point where there's a fallout between mother and father simply because of a financial issue. We bring the father full-scale back to understand, uh, being a part of a healthy relationship. Respect the mother, regardless of the situation, at the end of the day, you're both parents. Um, and lastly, the personal development. How can one do better for their family if they're not better themselves? Um, our program covers five counties, which is Darlington, Florence, Marlborough County, Dillon, and Chesterfield. We have two offices. Our, um, main office is in, um, Benesville and our office is here in Florence, uh, on thirteen twenty-one West Edmond Street. Inside of Darlington County, and of course, reaching of course to Hartsfield, uh, which happens to kind of be the area for myself and Mr. Turner, where we've can, started conducting our sessions at the Darlington Library, where we hold them every Monday at ten AM to twelve. Um, if individuals do not have transportation, we actually go and pick up the individuals. Bring them to the session, conduct the session. Part of that session, we provide a meal. And to many of our participants, that is the only meal that they have. So many of them are coming, yes, of course, the meal, but at the same time, we're giving them the strength and the verbal, actual instillment that they need to become impactful in their family's lives again. We also conduct a session in Florence Office, uh, on Mondays from, uh, two PM to four PM, and also in Hartsfield. Um, uh, four PM to six PM on Wednesdays, which we've been given the blessing by wonderful, uh, where?
She's gone, Pearson.
Uh, Ms. Pearson actually allows us to use, we start off at the dad cave and when the dad cave is inaccessible, we use the actual diva den for our, our sessions. Oh, gotta say this, um, our program is absolutely unique because as you think about fatherhood programs, not many come to mind. We have what's called a employment readiness boot camp that we put the individuals through. It's a five-day boot camp where we put them through everything from the actual learning of, uh, employment law, to make them employment-ready again. Uh, preparation on how to apply for a job, cause it's one thing to get the job, it's another thing to stay with them. Also resume building. We're even down to the point where we have, uh, individuals that don't have the proper clothing to do an interview. We have the clothing closet at our office. We will literally iron shirts and ties and slacks to get them ready. The preparations and everything to get them there. Also, once they finish this particular boot camp, they receive a certification, a leather, um, binder, a flash drive, so they can keep up with their resumes and everything. And informational contacts, how they can contact the employers. Now, on the important, this gentleman to my left, Mr. Craig Lightfoot. As participants are into our program, the beauty that he does is that he connects them with employment around the areas. Not necessarily being that an employment or temp service, but he's actually going to, uh, employment places such as Otis Elevator, Johnson Controls, General Electric, Honda. These actual places have partnered with us because of Mr. Lightfoot. So our participants, when they're employment-ready and we're funneling down to these companies, they're going right in the door, making that strong waves that they would opposite of a financial temp service. Those who actually graduate from our program, they come back to sit in the sessions because they have something to offer. We have a high number of success stories and then, and actually at the point of it, we were gonna try to bring some of our success stories with us today. But we wanted to come and, and introduce ourselves and let you know that we're here and what some of the things that we're doing in Darlington County, in Florence County, and also to mention the fact of our impact and our outcomes. Uh, currently, as of two thousand and seventeen, we have three hundred and seventy-four participants served. Children that have had a positive impact under the Fatherhood Program is eight hundred and fifty-five. We have a seventy-two percent reported improved relationship with their children. Forty-three percent with the child support order, um, have paid their child support, forty-three percent. Enrollers participated in parent-child activities is twenty percent, whereas first it was zero. Um, since the actual man-to-man program, we have helped over two thousand and sixty-seven fathers prepare to meet their material, emotional, and spiritual needs of their children. Last but not least, one hundred and sixteen men employed full-time, part-time, or temporary, one month or more that we've done. And all of this that I mentioned to you, I'd save this part for last, our program is absolutely free to the individual. So we take away the factor of saying that they don't have transportation, any other individual can receive, they don't have transportation. Their license has been taken over child support. We help out these factors. We actually currently now have one man, we're hoping to maybe one day get a, a second one and a third one. But if the pickup, have a participant, bring them to the services or take them to the interview. Even to the point if it's a doctor form, we take them there as well. We take away all those factors that would put those barriers still in front of them to make sure that they're efficient to be back in their family's lives again. At the end of the day, they're fathers. And one unique thing about us and them, we're all fathers as well. So again, we wanted to come and introduce ourselves and hopefully maybe one day come back before you. We, our, our, our program is actually under non-profit, five oh one C three, so of course donations are desperately needed. But maybe one day we can come back before you again and maybe talk about that, but we wanna introduce ourselves.
Well, I was saying you did it in the library, where now?
At, uh, the Darlington Library, every Monday at ten AM to twelve.
Are you trying to get a field to be in Darlington?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, absolutely. Um, because in that way, we could actually then host some of our other events that we have. Matter of fact, the, uh, employment boot camp that we currently have that in the Florence, um, office and also in the Hartsfield area, but if we could have one in Darlington, even better.
Good program.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
At the time, we have job openings, we could have your, uh, economic developer get in contact with us. We'd be glad to let you know what those openings are.
Leave a card with Mr. Gallow, pass the card to Mr. Gallow.
Hey, got you covered, Mr. Gallow.
Okay, all right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Uh, seek proposed North Street, Oak Street Historic District expansion. Thank you, for saying.
Thank you.
Good program.
Mr. Seeger, actually, we can put that on the agenda. If Seeger's gonna talk about it anymore?
I've been contacted by some of the residents in this section of the city, which is, uh, Oak Street and, uh, North Street, that, uh, they would like to pursue, uh, getting the, uh, historical district, uh, in that section of town. They, they see a need and an advantage to their homes to have that, uh, that declination. So, uh, I think Lisa has, she gave us some insight of that neighborhood and, uh, quite a detailed.
Uh, certainly, and, uh, I would also like to mention, we have several members from the Historic Commission. The neighborhood brought this originally to the Historic Commission members. The Historic Commission members went to these people, knocked on doors and physically talked to these people about joining or expanding the Historic Districts and if these people wanted it. Um, we have, uh, Ms. Ellen Abbott, who would be part of the expansion as well. Her home, uh, Ms. Lakin's home is already recognized on the registry, but she would also be included in that. Mr. Langley, uh, he's not on the commission, was previously served on the commission, but is a homeowner in that area. Ms. Kay Pearson, who's our chairperson, if you don't mind standing up and coming up here with me in case I have any specific questions. Um, and Mr. Steve Abbott, also on the commission. And Ms. Rose Pruitt, who's on the commission, but she just joined the commission. Uh, they have, uh, basically, there are, there were several areas in a state study from the State Historic Preservation Office, several areas in town that showed, here are some areas that could, you could expand the district if you chose, that it was warranted. Uh, and based on those areas that were in that survey, that is where the commission went door to door and talked to those folks in that neighborhood. Of those areas, this is the area that they felt, um, the neighbors, the people that lived in those houses were most amenable to this. And actually, one of the people who lives on this street is one of the people who started to ask for this to be expanded. When these homeowners get this district designation, they will fall under, any kind of exterior improvements will go to the Historic Commission, if they are gonna be outside the realm of changing the historic character. We will also help these folks get listed on the state and national register. Once they're on the state and national register, that opens them up to being able to get a tax credit of up to twenty percent if you're gonna spend more than fifteen thousand dollars on your home. And if you talk to any of these folks, you can spend fifteen thousand dollars really quickly in a historic home. Especially you talk about a roof, or you talk about windows, or if you have to rebuild or redo siding, it gets up there pretty quick. And a tax credit as opposed to a tax deduction just for doing some paperwork is a pretty good deal. Um, if you end up having to spend, if you have to redo windows and a roof and siding, some of these homes in our Historic Districts need a lot of help. Uh, if you have to spend a hundred thousand dollars on your house, it'd be nice to know you can write off twenty thousand on your taxes. And that's just for doing some paperwork.
Okay.
And that's what they, uh, we brought this to you before. To move forward, we'll have to send out certified letters, give a thirty-day notice period, and then we'll present it in ordinance format to you at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Finally, it's more of a statement. Um, the addresses that we have listed on North Street and Oak Street, and we have a variety of names listed beside those. I assume we've gone and contacted each one of those individuals?
Uh, from my understanding, uh, almost all of them have been contacted in person or on the phone. Uh, if we were to pursue the ordinance, they would be required to get a certified letter and be allowed to obviously speak in front of y'all in terms of whether they opposed or, you know, approved or got.
These are some of the ones that you gave us before, right, the same ones, right?
Yes, the, the same list, yes, yes.
And then, um, the map, that's the page before the listed names, this, uh?
This map?
Yes, ma'am. So the section that's off to the side?
This section here, um, if you can see in mine that has the red line and it's highlighted, is the current Casula Springs Street Historic District, this section right here. And this green area, get the little hash marks, is the proposed addition. Little green hash mark area. It's just, um, that first, uh, that block of North Street from Evangeline to the current, edge of the current district, and then, uh, some of the houses on Oak Street as well.
I've got no problem with us expanding the historical district. That being said, I would hope that our commission has made a good faith effort to try to speak to every one of these homeowners. It can be a financial burden on the homeowners to have to keep your house up to standard. That being said, if the current homeowners would like to expand the historic district and cover them, I have no problem with that. All right, well, um, to repeat myself, I have no problem with the historic district at all. That being said, I hope the Historic Commission made a good faith effort in reaching out to these homeowners to discuss it with them. Um, I don't wanna put an undue burden on those families without, um, discussing with them and them saying that they would like to enter into the historic district.
Did I not understand you to say that from the beginning that these people were?
The neighbor, there is at least one or two neighbors who are in this area and a couple of those folks are here tonight.
So not everybody in this has been contacted?
Uh, the only person I believe who has not been contacted is?
Only one.
Is the, um, Aegis Enterprises, uh, because we can't get a, because it is a rental property. Is the Aegis Enterprises, because we can't get a, because it is a rental property, so getting hold of the property owners themselves has been kind of difficult.
But you will get...
But they will get a certified letter that will go directly to the owner of the property, not to the renter.
At least, I think I asked you this before, but our posse is just, is right there, and I have, I, I just hadn't, when I, when I approached the administrative board, they had never contacted.
They had not? Okay. Well, they will be getting a letter. If we send a certified letter, they will be getting it. That's at one fifteen North Street.
Okay.
What if they don't want to?
And see, that's, that's to be, is there some stipulation, if they opt out, not to be...
Do they not want to be a part of it, or have they not?
I mean, they haven't been, the, the only communication was when I went back to find out if they had any communication. Of course, another one was the way...
Now, did they, is someone staying?
Yeah.
Someone's living in the house.
Yeah.
And they may just have not catch them.
Well, see, our pastor, we, we have changed pastors, and the pastor that just left, Pastor Caldwell, actually, home is Greenville, so he was not there all the time, but he was there at least.
That may be how they missed him. Who do they need to speak with? Because we certainly would, would love to sit down with them and talk.
Okay, at this point, Joanne Benson is our administrative board chair.
Joanne Benson?
Our new pastor is...
The board chair?
Yes. Is Levonda Dash, LaShonda Dash, but she's only been there two weeks.
She may not know what we're talking about. Well, we certainly do...
Our administrative board of chair is Joanne, is Joanne Benson.
Well, we certainly want to, you know, talk with them about it, and, and obviously, we didn't randomly choose these homes, we based it off of the state survey, because if it's the state that told us these should be in the Historic District, it's going to be hard for them to deny them being in the district if they're the ones who said they should be. Which is our, you know, theory of practice of getting those areas listed.
I figured I had a question of, is there an opt-out provision for a homeowner who would be within the area that's been drawn? Is there a vision of that?
Only if y'all excluded them from that ordinance.
We would have to, that person would come before us and say, "Sounds great, but I'm just not interested," and then we would expect...
You would have to take it out of whatever ordinance we present to you, expanding the district, it will list which properties, and you would just have to take that out of there. There are areas of town where there are non-contributing properties, properties that were built much newer than the rest of the houses on the street. And those properties are in the district, but they're non-contributing members. So, they still have to go to the Historic Commission, because obviously, we don't want to have something super modern next to antebellum sort of look, you know, just to keep it consistent and flow, because it does improve the property value when you have that continuity of character.
Well, I'm having trouble with it as long as everybody's on board, because if you contacted anybody, you're going to breach it.
Yes, we will, we had not started the official legal process of doing that, so we wanted to make sure that council was informed of the situation and was on board before we went through the trouble, because it is a, we've got sent certified letters, it'll have to have a public hearing, and I could have a notice in paper and things like that.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. First reading on the, on two thousand and eighteen dash zero C, local reference speed and order. Um, yeah?
There's been a proposal to change the ordinance on the bulky refuse pickup, and when I received this and looked at it, it says that the city, the, the one that's standing now says that we do not pick up brown goods, white goods, that's furniture and, um, refrigerators, stuff like that, we do not pick that up on a regular basis. And the proposed change said that the city will pick up appliances such as, but not limited to, refrigerators, ranges, water heaters, freezers, dishwashers, trash compacters, washers, dryers, air conditioners, and commercial large appliances. The city will pick up furniture or household items placed by residents on a reasonable basis. Residents may not place more than one appliance or piece of furniture per month to pick up. Placement of more than one item per month will result in an additional charge based on the attached fee schedule. All bulky refuse items should be placed outside the day before pickup. Any bulky refuse items not approved for pickup shall be removed by the owner within seventy-two hours. All apartment complexes shall have a container for tenants to dispose of bulky refuse. That was the proposed change. And when I read that, I said, "Well..." And that's the handout that I gave you. Should, it should not read that we would pick all that stuff up. It practically leaves nothing outside for, that we would not pick up. We have, it would be an extreme burden on the two new cherry pickers to start picking up all this stuff. I think it's opening a door for an enormous amount of refuse to be put out there. We are at present trying to control the picking up of the furniture. When someone puts furniture out there, it seems as though it is repeat offenders in the same location. We're trying to control that so that it doesn't happen. I think that in the last couple of months, it's been getting better, working with codes enforcement. When our guys, our sanitation, our picker guys go around and it's their day to be picked up, if they see the furniture or whatever out there on the side of the road, we contact codes enforcement, and if it warrants, they send them a letter that they need to remove it, because we do not pick that up. It's plain in the ordinance that we don't. I think we should leave that stand. My proposal is down at the bottom, to change the ordinance to just plainly read that when the city is forced to pick up unauthorized refuge, there will be a fee assessed to the next water bill. And the collection fee should be deposited into the street department's capital fund. That would help us build that fund up for replacement of equipment and vehicles for that department, leaving a burden on the budget to replace those things. The fee schedule would be if, if there's one to five items placed on the road and we wind up picking it up, it would be five dollars each item. Five to ten items, fifty dollars. Anything over ten items, a hundred dollars. And overly excessive that we wind up picking up, it would be assessed accordingly. So, this is helping us to, to get an income coming into the department and not adding on a burden, which I think the proposed ordinance would mean. You know, if you just open it up, then we're going to pick up the furniture, the washing machines, I think that that is just opening up a real bad situation.
I agree. Okay, I'm looking at the changes, it's plain to read when the city is forced. When would you determine your force?
When it's not, when the occupant hasn't removed it.
Okay, I mean, it's a time period of...
Well, the original was, what, seventy-two hours?
That's what I said in the original.
So, my question is...
So, that's what I'm saying, and then, okay, go ahead.
Hold on a minute, you finished your read?
Yeah, okay, so that means you have monitored...
We have, we have to monitor it, we, we are monitoring it now.
Okay, so, and if something is out there over a three-day period, however that is, then that's when you would pick it up and then go ahead and...
Assess the fee to the water bill.
Assess that to the water bill, okay.
Mr. Smith. So, um...
So, we need to say that, three-day period.
Then the last month or two months, we cleaned up a lot of the furniture and things off of the city, out of the city. So, if you're proposing that we're changing the orders that's going to say, "We're not going to pick up any furniture," or seventy-two hours of, of that case, to me, that would just push the citizens to go back and dump it on empty lots. Because we're saying, "Okay, we're not going to pick up this one piece per month." How many people got furniture they're going to throw away every month? It's not like there's going to be a lot of, the repeat people throwing away furniture every month.
Oh, yeah.
There've been a few who go offend either way.
Right.
But not everybody.
Right.
But if you get to what we're saying in my perspective, that we can't do one piece per month, then they're going to go back and put it on the empty lot. So, now you're going to send a letter to someone who didn't put that out, because you don't know who put it on the empty lot.
I'd assume in that situation that we would use some smart, if there's one house and there's an empty lot across the street, then we can probably assume that it came from the house across the street, but if not, we have to investigate. And if we can't, and if we can understand that, and if we can't prove it, then we can't certify anywhere. We'll just have to be more observant in the future. That being said, what I have an interest in is the one-five items, five to ten items, and anything over ten items. Is this an ongoing thing? Because, for instance, if I was a landlord and I owned ten properties, I would find it very lucrative to not have to put the back energy into bringing couches and TVs and all this stuff, and just put it on the thing and say, "Hey, I've got five items, this is going to cost me twenty-five dollars, and I don't have to take that to the dump." So, my only thing would be maybe take that bottom number and bring it to ten dollars each, so it's something kind of more substantial, a little more bite, and then have it being a thing that adds on, if you put one item in, and you put another item next month, then you have two. And, you know, as it goes up, you get up to twenty, and it's not twenty items on separate occasions, it's cumulative of every month that we find something on your property, then we, you know, keep a record, and your fine just gets higher the more flagrant you are. That'd be the only thing I'd like to change.
I think you need to raise that fee much higher than that. If you're a deterrent, five dollars, that's enough, ten dollars, that's not. In my business, if I deliver furniture to a house and they've got old stuff there, I haul it off and I dispose of it. Just think about what your landfill fees are going to be when you start hauling this stuff to landfill, you can't, you can't drop it in there for five bucks. You need to put forty-five or fifty dollars per item on there, so that these people think twice before they stick down.
I agree with that. I just, I put that there to raise interest.
Let's make it a deterrent and not make it an excuse for the...
Right, and I, I think that with the, we, we are having a situation with rental properties and working better with the landlords and the realtors about them not, when they evict somebody or, or just go in to clean the apartment, they put the stuff out there for us to pick up. We're working with them, and that's, that's one of the repeat offenders. We do have, you would be surprised, repeat offenders. Every week, they're putting, I'm going like, in a way, all this furniture's coming out of this house right here. Every week, they've got stuff out there, and you, and we're finding that it's been the same area over and over. My proposal is to leave it where it says, "We do not pick this up." We don't pick it up. Don't change it to saying, "We're picking up one per month," or whatever. Don't, don't even open that door. Leave it as it is. We do not pick it up. And you're going to have cases where, we are going to wind up picking it up on, on a lot that we can't prove who put it there. Well, we're not just going to let it sit there and sit there, we eventually are going to get it. But we tried to, and we are getting, we're finding that there are more residents that are, tell it.
Do you think you want to go on that tonight, or want to add on to it or what? I think if you tell Manny, make some adjustments to this. Do you want to do the first reading on it? We don't have to, you guys have a second reading on it. You're going to go ahead and...
We can do the first reading and then change it.
And then change it, in between the time, can we do that? Can you do that?
It's got a fear of.
It's got a fear of, okay, so we...
See you next month?
So... Please ask that we don't carry this for another year.
Yes, ma'am.
We need some more discussion on this, because like I said, five dollars is not enough, because some people will put it out there every month.
You're right, I agree, I agree.
If you will, don't use the word overly excessive and assess fee accordingly. I think that's too vague to tell the homeowner what you're going to give. So, if you, if you have determined that, you know, doing it more than five times a month, to put something in there that says, "You do it five times a month," you're going to be assessing fee of five hundred dollars.
Right, yeah.
Just give them the real numbers about what it's been. That way, you don't have to worry about, Mr. Smith got by with two hundred and fifty dollars, and Mrs. Jones got charged three hundred.
Right, and devise a method of communication to let people get the knowledge of what's getting ready to happen.
Mr. Smith. So, this, when you, whatever left on an empty lot, what is going to be the turnaround time of removing it from this lot? Because I don't want to sit in a month before we have to go.
Wouldn't that be the responsibility of the citizen?
No, because the citizen somebody didn't put it there.
Still his property.
No, see, that's what we're discussing.
That's what, that's like the man at that point.
The lot, the empty lot belongs to somebody.
True.
So, if it's an overgrown lot, we, we send them a letter and tell them that we're getting ready to...
How much, seventy-two hours for that?
I think seventy-two hours should be removed, because if the citizen didn't put it there, they may be out of town or living somewhere else, they didn't dump it in.
Well, it's like the gentleman that came last, last month, that wanted his trash picked up. Only lot that is his lot, but he didn't pick it up, so we got to pick it up.
Because there's no sanitation fees paid on a vacant lot.
Right, so, I'm just, I'm in, in that vein.
Yeah, yes.
So, if we can't determine who put it there, it's on a vacant lot, and I think we need to stay within the frame of seventy-two hours that we had on the original ordinance, so that way, at some point, we got to take it up.
Yeah, yeah.
Like I said, not two months, three months down the road, just get it out of the way within seventy-two hours.
And make an effort to get that property owner to monitor their property.
Yeah, if you can do that. If you live on the property, the ones that's out of time.
Right.
But we've got it over tonight, we need to go ahead and smooth it out. Go in, move it, and then...
All right.
Okay. Thank you. Here the pool, Verde Wells Stadium.
I have several quotes, and I'm going to do this in two phases for Verde Wells. As far as first, I'm going to do the side of the football field, then I'll do the playground equipment. All right, as far as getting the football field play-ready, we had a guy come in, we called several, we called several contractors, and a lot of them don't do masonry work, a lot of them didn't give us quotes, they came, they looked, they didn't send quotes. We received one quote, and that was from Reddy Little Scott, that was pretty work. And then, I think, there's also over three, we called different people, some came, and some never came back and gave a quote, so after that, we just turned it into a quote in the home. That was twenty-two thousand dollars for the blockwork to replace the parts of the blockwork that's missing on Verde Wells.
Just the one that is missing?
Yeah, all areas are missing. We got one in behind, in the bathroom, in the large area, when we first come in. And I, they got to do, I think, most of it, because they got to do the flipping and all that. A lot of guys came in, and they didn't get seen, and they told us what it was, so I guess they feel like we were getting a good deal for what we had, and they never sent a quote back.
So, you only had one?
We only had one quote, turn in for the lot.
It's like a lot of what?
It is, it is. Y'all looking out of some...
Oh, yeah, it's a lot of, it's probably about...
Mr. Scott, how much was the foot of that blockwork?
I don't have them down, but I know it's, it's a lot of, it's a lot of work.
It's like, it's almost like a quarter of the stadium is missing in blockwork.
Do we have a copy of the quote?
It was put in your original information, twenty-two thousand.
So when it's just after this fact?
It's not in this fact.
And that's a later material.
The second phase is with the goalposts. We do have goalposts over at Will Stadium, over there for nearly like fifty years. And we're looking at getting them removed and moved over and saying it would cost us just as much to get those moved as him to build us new. I think to get it moved, because the foot of the rock, we still have a hundred new footers taken down, sand it. I think that was a loss of like three thousand dollars just to get moved. He gave us a quote of almost four and five thousand dollars to build new ones. They're gonna be, we can set specs for high school specs. So there'll be the wind resistance specs and all that, so he got all these specs. So we're gonna build this new specs. And that came in at like forty, forty-eight hundred dollars. The bleachers over there at Will Stadium have to be disassembled and reassembled and moved. Our guys, we only have like five guys in this. It would be two times as soon for them to break down all those bleachers. Because the guy said he's gonna have to cut some of the posts off and replace some of the posts. Each one in three sections. And so he gave us a quote of thirty-eight hundred dollars to move, reassemble, to break them to disassemble, move and reassemble to Virgil Wells Stadium. So that would just the bleachers over there at Will Stadium. So it was adequate seats for our sporting events. And the last one is scoreboard. I got a talk to Pepsi about six months ago. And when we get our concession stands, we weren't in a deal with them, they gave us a new scoreboard. So that saved us almost six thousand dollars on the scoreboard. They donated a scoreboard to us. They already delivered. We have it in the warehouse. Same guy that's gonna move the bleachers, he gave us a quote of hanging, which is about a thousand dollars. That's hanging, they got the four, it's been the four-inch bar on. We, wind resistance specs. And we just received another quote today for another eight hundred fifty dollars for the line. So that would put us a little over ten thousand dollars to get the football stuff done, with goalposts, moving the stadium, moving the bleachers, putting the scoreboard up. We talked to them and we have a contract with one of the semi-pro football team, and their first game is August fourth. We talked to all the contractors and they would have this done before August fourth if we can approve it. It'll be game-ready. And we are moving our football season over there this year, so we'll be playing football over there this year. So everything is...
Just recreation.
Recreation, we're playing over there at Virgil Wells.
One phase.
One field.
So the total for all of this, you're talking about the playground equipment, tennis court?
This part is just the football. Football stadium. We're looking at about thirty-three thousand dollars just to get the football stadium.
Thirty-three thousand?
Could we vote on that?
Thirty-two thousand, five, twenty-five.
Would it get that to Virgil Wells football? Would it do that?
You wanna go on to seventy-four, three, four, five?
I think if we're gonna do it on several, probably we can vote on several. That would be my thing.
Y'all hear, Mr. Scott? We want to go ahead and vote, go ahead and vote tonight on the Virgil Wells Stadium.
Yes.
Thirty-two thousand dollars for that.
Because that, we have to have that in place before August fourth.
Yes.
For that to be ready for the semi-pro team. And if we have some bad weather, I'm just worried because it's already within a month. I would want to go ahead and try to get that done. Semi-pro team, are they just using this fee or gratis? Are they paying for it? No, they pay us. They have their own liability. If you recall, eight or ten years ago, we had another semi-pro football team, and it was some of the same fellows that worked that had that team. They have to have their own insurance, they pay their own referees, they pay their own security.
And they did pretty good last year as far as us, because we get concessions, the city run concessions. They rent the field, we get concessions, and we make pretty good off of it. So it's beneficial to us to have them. They bring a lot of people in, they come all over the area. They come from Marionian. We got guys from Johnsonville, Tennessee, Heartville. They all over the area, they bring a lot of people in. They play teams as far as from Virginia, North Carolina. So they bring a lot of teams, they bring a lot of people in to these stadiums.
Nice, that's where your money's made from concessions. What's your money made at?
Okay, can I get a motion on that, please?
I make a motion that we accept the bid proposal for Virgil Wells Stadium.
I'll second.
Please, lady. Discussion.
I think it's thirty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Thirty-one thousand?
Six seventy-five.
Okay, let me state that in your motion, please.
Can you give us those numbers again?
Yeah, I can.
I came up with something else. It's twenty-two thousand.
Yeah, it's twenty-two thousand dollars. We got four thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars. Three thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars.
Nine seventy-five.
Nine seventy-five, and the eight fifty is missing. I have to send you that one.
Thirty-two, five, thirty-five.
I make a motion that we accept the bid proposal of thirty-two thousand, five, twenty-five for the Virgil Wells Stadium.
I'll second.
Second.
Please, lady. It's the proposal, we accept the bid for thirty-two thousand, five, twenty-five for Virgil Wells Stadium. Go ahead and start. All in favor, liberal or conservative?
Aye.
Ladies have the same right, once you carry it.
And the next phase is the playground. If you look on the back page of the, if you check this table, we just received a quote today for the tennis court. And basically, what it was telling us is that the tennis court will be, it'll have to be removed and then they'll be building a new one.
So that's why it's so high.
That's why it's so high. We ended up talking to the guy and he says that the pro stage where they have to remove it and basically rebuild another one. If you look on the quote, it's where it's telling you that it has to remove the asphalt, remove the fence, and then reinstall a new fence and a post. So basically, you're getting a new tennis court. It came in at ninety-five thousand dollars.
Count, gentlemen, I gave the gentleman and the women who have indicated to me that they wanted the tennis court. I tried to, when I got the quote earlier today, tried to make a little random check to see if they would consider something else of that. But anybody wants the tennis court, so I'm still... So I ask you if you all would please consider that. I know it was pretty high. It's just that one?
It's two.
Two, yeah, I mean...
It's one even, but it's two courts, it's two separate courts.
It's twos. I know. But I'm going, I did make a little check because I know it seemed extremely high.
We got six tennis courts. How many we got?
How many courts, how many we got?
Six.
Six.
Is there a lead for two more tennis courts?
I mean, is this the those in that area?
Yeah, the agenda item that is on here is number F, is for the city tennis courts. I understand that field did, or that bid did come in a little high. I assume we're taking the tennis court information of the ninety-five thousand for information, as long as the playground information or the playground quotes for information as well, since they aren't listed as an agenda item. That being said, I'd offer that Howard maybe can look at a couple more companies, see if we can get some more quotes to maybe lower this bid a little bit.
I have not had time to do due diligence into ninety-five thousand dollars. The work and experience I've had with tennis courts has been to repair practice, not to replace them completely. So I can't vouch for whether it's high or low or in-between the bids we got.
Yeah, I think when we talked to the guy earlier, they basically, they gonna have to remove it and they basically building a new court. The event, because they have to, they have to close it, they have to basically rebuild it. They can't be traded.
So what are we talking about now? Are we talking about the city tennis court or the whole thing?
No, yes.
No, you're okay, I'm good.
Yeah. Now, I want to, would this impede the work on the playground?
No, I got a separate quote.
Okay. So we can kind of take a look at it, see if we can get a better price.
You see, I got a picture of the, for the playground, this is for the quote that we have. This is some of the stuff that, this is a 3D image that you look. He's trying to model it out. That quote came in at forty-four thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars. That's for all the playground equipment. And he said that's turning key, that's the stall you see down there, the, that's all the voting turn there and everything. He said forty-four thousand dollars would be, they do all the turnaround to that, the turnkey. We're gonna have to go out there and they do all the safety.
And that's where the original ball field is?
Right.
He told us, he did tell me that in about two weeks, we have, about two weeks ago, we got the power and the water turned off out there. And about, we're looking to floor, about two more weeks to demo in the building. Because I'm doing that. He said about two weeks, we're looking at demo in that building.
So this is, so we exist in baseball fields now?
This is the playground.
Do we, this, this talk to everybody here?
Can we explain, or have Brett explain where exactly he's talking about for this?
It's, um, right across from the Virgil, Virgil Wells football stadium, I'm dancing across the street. We have a baseball field where Little League played at.
Right.
And we moved in. That's the location, we're looking at the location and redoing it, putting the playground there. Right in front of the school. They gonna tear down the fence and move all the ball fields in the building, in the existing building there.
And that equipment I see in the back, back there, that's some that can't see, that's not visible that much.
In that little triangle, that was, I think, the original thing that, when he said that stationary playground, you do all workout equipment.
So the workout equipment.
I think he took it out of the bid. I think he took that out of the bid. It's not in his one.
It's not in his bid.
But it's just in the picture. That was something that we could be adding.
We add two. Okay.
What kind, what kind of, what's on the ground?
It's like a sawdust, it's like a pad, like a sawdust that you use.
It's not synthetic.
No, I think that you, you would like, going like sawdust.
Is it like mulch that they have?
Yeah, like more like a soft mulch, sawdust. We can move on to Hampton Street. I got a quote from Hampton Street, but it says wrong, Hampton Street probably. We're looking at this picture, it's not a 3D image, but he said he just do an outline. And that was some of the stuff that where we can put it at, where we can put some of the equipment at. When I talked to Lee, I asked him this morning, I talked to him about the quote. He said the quote come in at one ninety-three, nine seventy-three. He said some of this stuff could be added and deleted, that's why the guy didn't do a 3D model. He wanted us to go through and kind of see what we wanted before he did a 3D model. So we can pick and choose what we wanted from him. And this was, this was just a list of all the stuff that he had. And he said we can go through and pick and choose what we wanted and how big we want the park. So that's why he didn't do a 3D model, he just did an overview of it. He said we can pick and choose what we want, so it can go up to that much.
So we need to go through that first.
And the second part of it was the water part. It came in, it was splash pad, water part, that, that there on that same property. I believe it was put on Hampton Street, Dog Park. There was two. One is, you can see now, more water splash. I think this is the one that came in at seventy-seven dollars. You got one with like less water. It came in at sixty-five, so it gave you two options.
Which one are you showing, you're showing one over there for seventy-seven?
This is the one with, uh...
The round circle doesn't hurt.
Where the round circle's got like five, like six, seven, like ten.
It's the St. James' Parry.
Yeah, it got one, St. Parry one.
How much was that?
Seventy-seven dollars.
It's the St. James'. Okay, no.
One or it was one and one or two.
And two is sixty-five.
And two is sixty-five.
Two is sixty-five.
Oh, this is seventy-five.
Okay, sure. You see the one at seventy-seven, it's got a little bit more seating, it's got more splash pad, water features on it. And it also got a building. I don't have a photo of a lot of that water part. I was feeling in on that. He said that was another part we can add features to take off, depending on what we wanted. If we wanted to look at that was the option that we had, we can add, take off whatever we want.
Is there a price here for the building?
There's not a price for the building. I think that was just, when we looked on the front, he was saying that it was for the recirculation package. And I was telling you about the water, about recirculating the water and all that, and light grounds.
So the seventy-seven thousand doesn't include the building? That's just for the water car?
Yeah, just for the water.
Splash pad.
Splash pad.
So it doesn't include the fence in the round?
He said, second part, he said drainaway cost of equipment approximately thirty-nine K. The same splash pad with circulation package for seventy-seven dollars. I think that was just the seating in the circulation pump. Of the, of the, not the building.
I see that in St. James' two, the second example, there's a drainaway cost of the equipment approximately thirty-nine K. For the same splash pad with the circulation package, it cost me approximately seventy-seven thousand.
Yeah. And that's both of them, they add, the pad itself is one price and they give you a price to add circulation pump for the water. It's about another, it's about another half that price to put the circulation pump on. So you're looking at about thirty-nine on both of them for thirty-nine thousand, thirty-four dollars for the actual splash pad itself. And you're looking at another thirty-seven thousand for the circulation pump.
It would need your circulation.
You're gonna do it, you must have been doing it right.
Pretty sure all this information is just for information. So we move along to item number F.
Uh, hold on a minute, uh, hold on a minute. I'm telling you, we, it's so long. Are you finished, Al?
Yes, ma'am.
You finished?
Yes, ma'am.
We'll go over this at a time, and then we'll come back on it.
We're still waiting on the quote on the baseball and softball field. So we're looking to go on to have the work session on everything all together.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, F, the bid approval of tennis court repairs.
I thought that's what, okay. Does this mean the seat is on this?
I think it's on this.
This is the Bill King Tennis Center, which is on this lot?
Dennis's City Park. One over here, the tennis court over here.
Oh.
It's not the same thing.
So what's that?
The city, the school district pays half of whatever the total cost.
Eight, eight, what'd you say, eighteen, seven, fifty?
And the school district pays ninety-three, seventy-five.
Eighteen, seven, fifty. I make a motion that we approved the bid, the bid approval for the tennis court repair at eighteen...
Seven fifty.
Seven fifty.
It's the property, property motion is second, that we received a tennis court repair for eighteen thousand, seven hundred. And the city's fine. All in favor of the vote, everyone, decide aye or nay?
Aye.
Ladies have the same right? Mr. Smith? Board's commission appointment?
There have been several openings since we get to the beginning of the new fiscal year on July first. Some folks dropped off. Some folks were reappointed. And we did have some people that wanted to apply for those seats. The first one I want to take out, this is the planning commission. There's one seat and one alternate seat available. Mr. Milling mentioned Mr. Howard Nettles, who works against the healthcare as a choice for that. Mr. Millen mentioned Mr. Howard Nettles, uh, who works in the healthcare, has a choice for that. Um, Ms. Leitha Martin, uh, who lives on Jordan Street, asked, uh, to be appointed to that board as well. And Ms., um, I can't read her handwriting, Roslyn, is she green? Green?
What board is this, ma'am?
The planning commission. This is, they meet every other month on the third or Tuesday. Um, basically, they talk about proposed ordinance changes, and they also deal with our comprehensive plan, which has to be completely redone, uh, so that they will be holding probably more meetings than every other month, um, as we get.
Howard Nettles, three, well.
Uh, there were three votes, Mr. Howard Nettles, Ms. Leitha Martin. Um, she apparently helps, she's disabled, um, and works, uh, previously, you know, worked with the voting, voter registration. Uh, and then Ms. Backers presented this to me, Ms. Roslyn Green, you said, is that her last name? Ms. Roslyn Green, uh, who has a master's of education administration, and is in a supplementary, um, program previously, is also paralegal. So those are the three individuals, um, who were, who have submitted that said they were willing to serve on the planning commission. However, we only have two seats.
Okay, um, we're doing just the planning commission, right?
Yes, ma'am, and, and we do have to do them individually without.
So which one we going to prefer?
Um, Mr. Howard Nettles, I believe was brought up first.
Can I get a motion, um, Mr. Nettles?
Move Mr. Nettles to be appointed to the planning commission. I'll second that.
Okay, the property motion is second, we received Mr. Nettles on the planning commission, all in favor, there's a sign of a.
Aye.
Ladies have the same right, okay, what's the name?
Um, there's Ms. Roslyn Green, who's previously paralegal, I think a paralegal with a master's degree. It certainly would be of value to the planning commission.
Can I get a motion to receive Ms. Green for the planning commission?
I make a motion that we receive Ms. Roslyn Green for the planning commission.
Slacker.
Motion is second, we received Ms. Green, all in favor, there's a sign of a. Ladies have the same right, okay, motion care?
All right, um, the next board that we have, one seat available, we have the beautification board. Um, two people have applied for this seat. Um, there are, um, a couple of people who have not attended beautification board meetings, at least the last three, so, um, you could approve both of them if you chose to do so. Um, one is Ms. Leitha Martin, again, she's disabled, she's worked, um, with polls and things like that. Um, and I believe she may have been a nurse at some point. Um, and then the other person who has applied to be on the beautification board is Ms. Gladys Jewels, who currently is serving as well on the tree board. Uh, she's recently come to town and, um, seems to be very active and wanting to be involved.
Beautification, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a motion?
I'll motion that we approve Leitha Martin for the beautification board.
Second.
Uh, is the property motion is second, we received Mr. Lee, right?
Leitha Martin.
Okay, I didn't get that yet, that's right here. Leitha Martin for the beautification board, all in favor, there's a sign of a.
Aye.
Ladies have the same right, motion care?
And then Ms. Gladys Jewels, he was likely to also serve.
I motion that we select Ms. Gladys Jewels for the beautification board. I'll second.
Okay, the property motion is second, we received Ms. Gladys Jewels for the beautification board, all in favor, there's a sign of a.
Aye.
Ladies have the same right, motion care?
Uh, we also do have a couple of other seats that are open, so if you know folks who are interested in serving, there's a, an alternate seat available on the store landmarks commission, and there is a seat available on the board of zoning appeals, which is very critical that we keep that staff at full capacity, because if we run into an issue, we have some problem getting more, that could cause issues.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Eight forty, you thought that the motion should be, tell them what you think.
Good evening, Mayor Mayor. I promised you this week, it's possible. I, um, I've been here now about four months, and, uh, we took a look at the way the office was structured, and decided to do some restructuring and reorganizations. As a result of this, uh, the restructuring, reorganization, um, several members of the department, um, are receiving well-deserved, uh, promotions. And the next Monday evening at six P M., we will have our first promotion ceremony. I thought it would be a, a good opportunity, uh, for them to invite their spouses and their children to come out and see mom and dad, get promoted. I think for the most part, their family members know and realize that their mom, moms and dads, um, have very important jobs. But, uh, for them to come and, and, and participate and actually see that promotion ceremony and have their boss say something nice about their mom and dad, I thought would be very special. And so next, uh, Monday evening, we'll have our promotion ceremony here.
Sixteenth.
Yes, sir, sixteen, uh, I'm sorry, that, yes, next Monday, is that sixteen?
Sixteen, yes, sir.
Sixteen, yes, thank you, six P M., yes, ma'am, uh, next Monday evening. Um, it should only last about thirty minutes or so. Uh, the next, um, uh, date is August seventh. I know that that's a council meeting, uh, night, but that is the, um, the night for National Night Out. National Night Out is an annual, um, community building campaign to promote police, police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderies. It's celebrated all over the country, and this will be the first opportunity for us to celebrate it here locally. Uh, we're going to, uh, celebrate it, um, I think, is that Liberty Lane?
Liberty Lane and Pearl Street.
Liberty, Liberty Lane and Pearl Street is where we'll be. Um, we're asking you all to be in attendance as well, we're inviting the entire community to come out and participate. Uh, gives, uh, the police and the community an opportunity to come together, um, in a, in a very positive setting, and, and celebrate what we hope to have, a night of, um, of little to no crime in Garland, in, uh, community. Um, we will begin, uh, evening at four o'clock and end at seven at the council meeting, begin at six thirty, so that will give you all an opportunity, uh, to come down and participate as well. At this time, I'll answer any questions that you all may have about these two, uh, crimes.
Is there any question?
Very good, thank you all, and on behalf of my agency, thank you all for your continued support of our agency, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll come over there, uh, excuse me, received information, you're probably, of course, no exit needed. Number ten, council comment, I want to thank, um, Mr. Curtis Vaughn for sponsoring, um, to have work done in the medium in front of Mitchel Field, it's good, thank you for that.
Sweetie, I want to comment, and I hope I'm not out of order. Um, I, I wanted to, I thought about it, I don't know, and after we make that comment, go ahead. I didn't want the, the vote for, um, the city manager to go like it is. It's not against the, the contract, because I really want to support him and keep him. But it was a, a thing we wanted, the work session prior to approving, uh, voting on the contract. And that, and I kind of just wanted to have that in the minute somewhere that, that more powerful to think that I wouldn't, didn't want him back, because it wasn't that. I'm, I'm being light, I'm, I'm making light of it, but it's just kind of important that, that, that he knows, as well as our residents knows, that our, our council is in support of our city, city manager at this time for the kinds of things that he's doing. But, um, there are some things that we would, I would have liked to have done prior to, uh, the vote that went on, and that was the reason why. And I just wanted to kind of have that.
Land wise, I feel the same way, some, certain things need to be put in place, but.
They have to work session.
I would have a problem with this, uh, certain things I will, you know, put in place first.
Um, we, thank you. Councilman Millen had discussed us doing a work session on the, um, city manager and the role the council has with him, and the role he has for the city. Um, I'd like to ask that we do work on getting that work session put together. Uh, also, once we got the final numbers on the recreation equipment for all the different properties we have, I'd love to have a, um, work session shortly after that as well, once we have all the properties accounted for.
Well, you have a work session scheduled for twenty-six, but that's storm work. Uh, y'all want to stick with that, or you want to move to those? Twenty-six, July twenty-sixth?
I'll be out of the state as well.
Oh, well, I guess. I want to get over that, anyway, but I can't. I have a version.
I guess I'll motion adjourned. Anybody second a motion adjourned?
Oh, excuse me, y'all jumped a little bit too fast, we finish the job. Remind us, Thursday, um, Sunday, July ninth, July twenty-second, two thousand eighteen, M E S C, an annual meeting in Hilton Head Island, South Carolina. Thursday, July twenty-sixth, two thousand eighteen, six P M., city council work session, and we know that's not getting happening now. Um, Tuesday, August seventh, two thousand eighteen, six thirty, regular monthly meeting, Dallas city council. Now, I got a motion to adjourn. I make a motion. Second. On a chance, anybody do say? Aye, ladies have the same right, motion care adjourned.